Gackle City Council meeting for Monday, February 7th, 2022. You guys had a chance to look at the previous minutes. Any corrections or additions? If not, we'll take a motion to accept those.
Move to.
Second?
I'll second.
All of them in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then we have. What did we add to the agenda?
What's his name over here again?
Nathan?
Nathan, yeah.
Okay. Add them to the agenda.
And then I didn't have either one of these two. Are you either one of you on the agenda?
And then the election.
Your brain line.
Okay.
What's that?
Good luck.
Let's get real.
Okay. Throw that on new business then?
Yep.
Okay. Actually, I'm glad you guys came because we had a couple of questions from the last meeting and I forgot to call you. I'm sorry about that.
Okay.
I should. Do we have that on the business?
What will we add on the business?
Well, we had some questions on Kyle Puskett, we live in out of town, that we wanted to address and make sure everyone was on the same page with that and move forward. So nothing big. It was just. If no one else says anything, take a motion to approve tonight's agenda. So move. Bubba, second?
Second.
All of them in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we'll just go straight to more engineering here.
One thing I want to talk to you guys about, not involving street projects. So when you guys did your sewer project in 2009, I believe you funded it originally through rural development, correct?
Right.
And then it was refinanced through the public finance authority in North Dakota. So she called me today. She's the same, they administer the funding for the SRF program also. Interest rates for the SRF program right now are down to 2%. So when you refinanced through public finance a while back, your interest rates were in that, it varies. I think it's like three to four percent, somewhere in there. As long as that project was built with SRF requirements, she said you can refinance through the SRF program and drop your interest rates to 2%. So what that would do is it would save you like 50 grand from now through the end of your loan payments in 2036. So if you're interested, that's potentially out there. The only cost to do that is you have to hire a bond counsel, which that fee is about 2,500 bucks. And then the application, you guys could probably do it yourself. If you wanted help, we could, we could help you with it. But it would pretty much strictly be in the city, working with, with public finance to it. So Deanna Ameth out of Jamestown is the one that administers that program. She's going on vacation next week, but she called me today, wanted me to bring it up to you guys. If you're interested, we need to get your letter of conditions, it's called, from when you did the project. There's. The rural development sends out a letter of conditions. We have to check some requirements to make sure it meets the SRF requirements, which she's pretty sure it does. But that'd be an option for you guys if you're interested in refinancing.
Absolutely. Let's see, why not?
Save you like five grand a year.
I'll apologize. He mentioned it to me earlier, what, about a month ago, two months ago? I forgot about it.
This is, no, this is, this is new.
Oh, this is new?
Yeah, so she just called me today. So you're not on the SRF list for this work, but we can, we can work with the SRF program and modify it and it's, it's really very minimal. Just bond counsel cost is all it is. So. If you're interested, I'll, I'll call her back and she'll probably want to set up a meeting with you and Sherry and just talk about it and make sure you guys have all your stuff from the previous project, but good option.
Yeah, that's a good one, right here.
I'll make a motion to move ahead with it. Just like the refinancing.
Second?
Second.
All of them in favor?
Aye.
Sherry, if you have, if you have records now of sewer projects, I could take those and scan them to Deanna if you have a letter of conditions, if you can find it, and then she can check to see if you qualify.
Well, you've got like two, three, four, five, six sewer books over here. I'm sure of it.
I'll maybe come dig through those.
That won't make any difference, Deanna. That time we rolled, I think we had four different loans. We rolled all four into one. There were some from the wells yet.
There's, there's water stuff in there, like 150,000, I think is what she told me. And then there's sewer for 850,000 or somewhere is the dollar amounts and she, she believes it qualifies. So. If some of the water doesn't, maybe you can still refinance the sewer portion of it, but she was, she wanted to see and check and save you guys some cash if you can.
Okay, awesome.
That's, that's all I have. Michael wants to talk to you about the project and.
Yep.
So we still have the budget wise, we got about $150,000 extra left from contingencies and going under on some items here. Last, I don't remember, probably three or four months ago, you guys told us a couple of streets you guys wanted to do. I just wanted to double check that this is still the route you want to do. Think we'll be able to do, talking about Luke with border states, we'll be able to do three out of the four of these. I don't think we'll get, be able to get the fourth one. But I just wanted to make sure that this is, so the one east of the apartments is your first priority and then the one south on Fort Ab and then one by the ball diamonds will be your third. And east of the school, which I don't believe we can, will be able to do, but I'm gonna be working with Luke with border states this week. So I just wanted to double check that this was your, your guys' game plan on what you guys want to do with extra.
We're at the point where we need to get a change order locked in to get those guys lined up to get there. So it doesn't have to be tonight, but if you guys want to talk about it, we'd like to get those guys locked up. Oil, oil's going up, which you guys know, so asphalt goes up with it, so.
So it gave me a new asphalt price and everything. We're, we're able to do three out of those four is probably what the.
So we need to lock in their asphalt price so we can, before it keeps going up.
And we got all the patching done that we wanted to?
We'll probably have, we haven't, we've only done half the patching quantity, so we'll have, we'll have more patching to do. And if we do three out of the four, we'll still have probably 10 to 20 grand left still. We can do some more patching if, if need be. Probably can't get a whole street done, but we'll be able to do more patching as well, but.
That fourth option, east of the school, that one we got already figured in a big section of that for patching, right?
Correct. Yep, yep. We're able to do that with our, with our patching quantity. So, but you guys weren't sure that you wanted to do the patching quite yet and they want to do the whole street.
Yeah, we spent, I think about half our patching quantity, give a half bit left, so.
And I thought that was on there already.
We haven't done it yet. No, we're waiting.
But I mean, it was on.
Yep, it's on the list to do with the other half.
I think there's a stretch right here that's really bad.
Oh, yeah.
If we could possibly get that in, I think we should.
There's a spot over by Clifford Clunce too that needs patching. That one's pretty bad too. Looks like it tore up the street. They must have dug in and cursed off or something.
We'll be able to do some patching.
That one we can just patch though?
Yeah, that's just a patch. It's not very big.
Okay. By the school, it's a glorified parking lot, like get it patched. I don't think we need to do that.
And it was, I think it came off, I remember like five or six feet.
Yeah, it was kind of the whole length too.
Damn, it's the whole length.
Yep.
And that was the absolute worst, I mean, of that street. Yeah, are you guys okay with? I know this stretch here is about the worst in town. Or if you guys, well, if we can do three, it doesn't make sense to swap those two. I don't think we need to swap that one ahead of anything else.
Fully open that.
Just so that we can end up, if you have a hole somewhere, we could patch.
It sounds like we'd be okay with that.
Okay. So what we'll do is we'll get, we'll get the change order locked in for those three, just to get them, get them on the schedule, get them coming here, see how things are coming. And we might have a council meeting middle of the week in the summer and say, hey, guys, we got extra this much left. We need to do one more street. You wanna, what you wanna do? If that's, if that's okay, I just want to.
If we can do that, I'd rather wait until spring when the snow's melted and we got a few more things pop or something stupid that we don't see right now.
Yep. So chip seal will happen this summer too and the fog coat over the top of it. And part of that is crack sealing too. So your asphalt streets will crack. They have to crack transversely, you know, across the road. That's just asphalt that stands and cracks. So. Expect some cracks this spring. If you see some, that's, that happens. So it's supposed to crack across the road. So we will seal those as part of the project. We have quantity to seal them and then we'll chip seal over the top and fog coat over the top of that too.
So are there new cracks every year or is it just initial crack?
How asphalt works is, you know, like if you do a concrete road, you saw cut it every 10 feet. That's where you want the cracks to happen. They don't always follow that. Asphalt, you pave the whole thing, you let it crack where it's going to. Typically, they'll start every 150 feet or 100 feet and then a few years later, they'll be down to every 40 feet and then they'll be down to every 20 feet. That's, that's how it works. So. They'll, they'll be new ones. It'll, it'll happen. If you maintain your roads and seal them and keep chip sealing them, it, it helps prevent it, but over the ages, it can lead to crack.
Do we need a motion? Can we as well make a motion for that then so we can move ahead?
Sure.
Motion to move ahead with the alternate streets. Added streets. Second on that?
Second.
All of them in favor?
Aye.
I don't know if we made a motion on that. I think we just talked about it.
We'll get the change order, official change order, put together for them, figure out when it's gonna come. Hopefully, anyway, in spring.
Okay.
Then I'm gonna dig through your sewer files if that's okay.
Yeah, I've got all the sewer ones right here.
Okay, so anything else, guys? Anything for them? Thanks, guys. Okay, Nathan, what do you got for us?
What do you have, sir?
Well, I think I gave someone the information on the backflow prevented stuff. There's an ordinance. How do I say that? We have to start with an ordinance to put this backflow prevention stuff into place.
Okay.
This.
All right, so what the state is requiring right now is obviously they're pushing for this backflow systems to be put into, well, initially it was the municipal buildings, which is all the city buildings, city owned or operated buildings and the businesses as well, or corner shops. They backed off to just have the municipals starting, well, just getting started filling out the two appendixes that they have. There are appendix A and appendix D. That's them two right there. Now, what that does is just allow us to do a survey of the municipal buildings and your, 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 your businesses as well. Just seeing what you have and what may need to be put into place, how many already have backflow systems. It's just for documentation and record there, okay? Then they also want to see a write-up of what you're gonna do and what you're gonna require, okay? Now, this is just, this is the absolute minimum of what they're asking for right now, you know, as long as they can see you guys are moving forward in the right direction, or just moving forward here, if you're doing something, you're gonna back off. So if everybody's getting kind of wound up, it's just, it'll be okay. We'll just relax a little bit. And I will help you guys with that or we'll bill with this. All these guys do this anyways. I'm going through and auditing everything, or it's audit, it sounds horrible. It's horrible work. Going through and checking out the businesses and the municipal buildings. Now, from my understanding, there's pretty much this, this building and then the one you guys rent up on the hill or whatever. That would be two, the two pretty much just up concern that you would want to be, want to bring up to code. Now, this backflow prevention stuff isn't it. It's just, they're just starting to force it. They came out, they came out with it in the 1970s. They revamped it in, I think, 97 and now they're just starting to lean on. North Dakota's five to 10 years behind the country right now. Every other state is ahead of us. It, it's not like this sort of thing is happening all the time, but it is happening, can happen, and they want to keep everything to a minimum, you know? It keeps the city safe and the businesses safe as well. The, the main part of this is the city needs to protect its infrastructure and that's, that's the wall. Any sort of contaminants or pollutants backfeeding somehow. A massive break somewhere and somebody's filling up chemical tank over somewhere, you know, and higher on the hill, pressure is lost down here. It'll actually siphon out of the tank into mains and then you get sick and possibly dying people. Once these are put into play, which was where the ordinance would come in. You keep, you cover the city's bottom more or less. There's, once you have these things put into play and then an ordinance established, but it doesn't need to be done today, you know, it's just something to progress forward. It covered, any city building will be covered because you'll have the backflow. So somebody, you, you don't have to worry about contamination getting from this building into the water and, well, contaminating. The next thing is why I kind of push for, you know, the next step, it's better to be in front of the ball than behind the ball, you know, or ahead of the game than behind. Is the ordinance. Well, that's what we'll be doing when we go through the businesses and just see what they have, what size line, you know, what material, what size, what they're using and what kind of backflow unit they would require. Now, we'll go through all that, see what they have in the buildings. We'll see what, there's even another appendix that suggests what unit to put into these places such as like a car wash or an elevator, chemical plant, cafe, you know, there's all, there's all kinds of different options. But once we see what you guys got out there, you guys can fill them two out, mail that to the state, they're content. Now we can proceed forward with finessing city ordinance. Cause that's an example one that he passed up there. Well, this is, this is a write-up of one. There's the example ordinance from the DEQ right there, that picture one, and that goes through all the different standards and requirements on how it is applied towards commercial buildings, municipal buildings and whatnot. So after we finesse that, then that'll be sent to a lawyer and then the law, or whoever you have to do your, your final writings if you're, have them dress it all up. So it's unique, individualized to the city. Now, this is a cover page for Glenn Ollinger here that he's holding. That, that's third paragraph, whatever that is, it explains everything almost perfectly without me going too in, into depth with everything, which I end up doing sometimes. But it just shows the highlights of the requirements. It kind of enlightens the people of why these are getting put into play and why they're getting pressed on right now. You want to go into cost, a unit for, you're only gonna need one to two units. That's not gonna be very much. The city should be able to afford that. Once again, that would cover the city's behind end. Now, when you're getting, when we're getting, when we go further into this and we're getting into the businesses. By all rights and honesty or reality, the business is supposed to be responsible for installing their own backflow unit as well. Now, excuse me, usually there is, I know out there right now, there is some COVID money, whether it's been used up or not. I guess, I don't know if you guys had other projects going on or whatnot. It's, it's newer as of, I want to say November, October, Novemberish. But some people are using that to take care of and fund this backflow. I was just in Edgely and that's what they were talking about too. They probably got 30 businesses, 20, 30, up and down, pool and whatnot. And they are getting, every town is different, depends on population, businesses, I believe, but they're getting about 40. Well, that 40,000 should be actually more than enough if most of the businesses up and down Main Street just have a three quarter inch line and backflow. You know, that, that requires a lot less expensive units, which is what's called a testable dual check. Well, maybe they can get a good deal on 50 of them. Pretty sure they'll use 50 of them, you know, and then have a couple on hand. Now, you still have to pay a plumber or whoever, you know, if the city can take it upon itself to pay for this and get it instilled into the community, that, that takes a lot of pressure off the community too because every business, all of a sudden, if you come in, hey, you need to do this, pay for this, now this is gonna cost us much. Don't matter. State said so. It's a new ordinance. Go. You know, it's, it's, obviously you gotta try to ease into a lot of this stuff so people understand and don't get too excited. One thing they need to understand is just education, just enlighten them on what's going on, what's happening, why, how long it's been in play and why this is starting to get pushed through now. Once you guys do establish an ordinance, you still have 130 days after that ordinance is established for other people. After you've kind of enlightened everybody on what's going on, what's happening, and then we look to see what's needed, they'll have an idea on cost, installation and everything. And they still have 130 days to become compliant after the ordinance is passed. And it still takes three months to, I believe, three months of three meetings, well, it's brought up in red, and in order for it to become an ordinance. So you got three months plus 130 days, but honestly, you should not let a whole lot of people know all that detail right away because then they'll just put it on the back burner until it's the last day and then. You're gonna have to start enforcing whatever penalties end up going into the ordinance for not becoming compliant. Okay. I'm almost out of breath. Any questions?
What about the testing? I know earlier that one she.
Every year, these units, they need to be testable and they need to be checked or tested every year to be recertified. I actually am certified for testing now. I can't install them, but I can repair them and I can certify them. Therefore, if I test one, which has happened just in Nadel actually, dual check, RPC unit they're called, tested, failed. Okay, so I wrote everything down, failed, we ordered the parts. I came back as soon as the parts came in, I came back, repaired it, tested it, certified it, taped it. There we go, off. Now, to hire somebody to come in, other, other than me, I should say, to hire somebody to come in and do that, it's gonna get pricey. Which is why we try to, we extend a lot of our help out there as well, being I'm certified and I have the equipment, or there's three of us that are certified right now. We're going for four. We charge it as 20, $20 per unit. And the only reason we're charging that 20 bucks is not really a charge, it's a maintenance fee. Because every year I still have to send that, my equipment in and get my equipment tested and recertified, calibrated and recertified as well. Which that's 100 bucks plus what is it, 50 or 60 for shipping it down to Florida and then getting it back. Plus, if I have anything that breaks or a hose that goes bad or anything, a gauge.
So does this go right by the, the main coming into the house or?
Where you put it is, what, the standard requirement from 10 state rules is 10 pipe diameters from the meter. So if you got a one inch line coming in, 10 inches down. Yep, the, the only reason for that is, is for any turbulence or turbulence or whatever they call that, for water to slow down or speed up. If it's too close to that, or the meter actually is too close to an elbow, elbow or something as well, it can cause a little bit of turbulence in the water, causing the meter to reappear either fast or slow. So that's why the requirement is 10 pipe diameter. Three quarter inches is what, seven and a half inches away? So, and then that's, that's, a lot of that will be, I'm thinking that'll be 90% of what you have for businesses in towns, a three quarter inch line, which I'm guessing get into a unit. And I'm not, I don't sell them. I don't know. I actually talked to Ferguson, Jeremy, or whoever you guys deal with and see if you can get some prices. I want, I would say three to 600 bucks for a unit. Pricey, but once installed, done. So the, the, the businesses are gonna be coming next, right down the chute. That's why I'm gonna try to keep working with you guys, working with a lot of people to try to get an ordinance put together, set up, individualized for each city and then get it passed. And then see who you have can get for equipment as well. Obviously, you'll have to have a plumber come in and install a certified plumber, obviously.
Is there something like League of Cities, can they just, can we just adopt one of your ordinances or?
There's, there's sample ordinances. There's just the North Dakota Department of Urban Water Quality, which is the health department. That's that, that's that one. And then the League of Cities has one. There's other ones that are online. You could go get another one from another town in another state, you know, I mean, just do some call around and find out what's out there. And the biggest part of it is just getting it and then finessing it to apply to this individual town, just for here. Which is a lot of it, what you have here, what's gonna be required, what units you want installed on certain businesses for the, the level of possible contamination. Yeah, a lot of it's just individualizing it and then send it to, get it written up real good back to lawyers legally and then be adopted. Now, another thing with what's right there or anyone that you would end up adopting or, excuse me, bringing in, in passing. If something changes and it's not working out, okay, this isn't working here or there. This is what we're requiring. People are ticked off because whatever, something's not, something's happened. You can always go back and you can amend that ordinance. It's not like it's set in stone. So you can still fabricate it and mold it to what you need in the future. Now, I probably shouldn't say this, but down the road, it's gonna be to the individual households as well. Don't think about that. It's 10 years, 5, 10, it's, whatever. It's a long ways down the road, the biggest thing.
Well, four, five or 10 behind, that's 20 and I'll be gone by then.
I'll be way off. But it's, it's coming, you know, and right now, this is the biggest part and it's the hardest part. Everybody's struggling. Everybody's worried and it's totally understandable. But once this first step is taken and this, you know, this first year gets passed, everything will roll a lot smoother because everyone will be a lot more familiar of what's happening, what's going on and how they need to do it.
So you'll just stay in touch with Bill and then?
Like Community Development owns a building on Main and there's three different businesses in there. There's three meters. There's a laundromat, a clinic and a beauty shop. Does that require three backflow?
Unless you have one main that comes in, you can put it on.
There's one main coming in and then it branches and there's three meters.
You could put just one in there and maybe they would want to split the costs three ways, but them three places are actually on the, the higher scale for contamination, chemicals, chemicals used in all three.
So it's, with only one backflow preventer, it could pass.
It could, it could still, yes, it can still go between possibly. Well, actually, no, it shouldn't because if you have the backflow, unless you have a line right in front of it, if you have that backflow installed in that one line coming in, it still can't backfeed.
Not to the municipal, but it could backfeed from the.
If, you would have to break a line right in front of it or somehow. Yeah, it's possible if this, the water was shut off and somehow there's a high suction over here or draw or pressure, yeah, it could possibly push back your oil. But your, your entity, the city, will be taking care. Now, right there, that's when you do the, that's when you're going through, okay, we got these three different lines. Probably want to address that in, in the, in the possible future ordinance. Now, that would be between them, if you ask me. They could put a, for example, that could be comparable to a household. Now, I believe there's a lot of hard water out there and a lot of the RPC units or dual checks, which are more expensive. It's harder to replace them or they just get built up and you gotta repair them and then you gotta replace the whole unit. Now, they do make a non-testable dual check valve. Unit's about this big. And if that were to be put in the line, for example, this is just for example, you put that in the line in a household. Now, you're still gonna have to have an expansion valve or an air tank on the household side so they don't have air hammer, but once again, that'll be their responsibility. But that little dual check, if you have the harder water, make it so it can be replaced really easy once it's installed and then just put in the ordinance every five years, eight years, the non-testable dual check needs to be replaced because it can't be tested. Up north where they have a really hard water and little water entities out there, that's what they put in all the households and all the farms, is that replaceable dual check. And every few years, they replace them because if they put the expensive testable dual check, they're, it's, they're filling up with magnesium and calcium and they're, they're not doing their job. So that's why they put a replaceable dual check in there, non-testable. But once again, gotta look at everything. We're gonna step back from that and we're gonna look more just the municipal building now, which is, or municipal buildings, isn't that paperwork, that paperwork filled out and emailed in and then. The businesses as well, just to see what we got out there and then, then we have a really good idea. Cause in all honesty, the city buildings aren't the one you worry about. Them are the ones, them buildings or whatever, are the people that know about the water and what needs to be done. All the other people, the businesses or homeowners, it's, they don't ever have to think about it. It's either just on and I don't got them, you know, and now the problem, you know, they don't think about what it all takes and.
Any worries, any doubts or concerns?
It's a big unit.
Yeah, okay, well, good luck, Phil.
Hey, you just unloaded it. So that's, that's what's coming up and that's what we're working on right now.
Okay. All right, appreciate it.
That's 320 bucks.
All right, anything else on that, guys? Questions?
Nathan, where do you, where do you work from?
Um, I actually travel just all over the state, but I live down in Wyngmar.
No, no, no. What do you, who are you representing?
I work for North Dakota Rural Water Systems Association, contracted by the USDA RD Department to do this, go around, help, aid, assist and train.
Is there a deadline we have to have ordinance?
Well, ordinance? No, as long as we can get them done and email them, give them to, and then a write-up of what you're gonna require or what your plans are for getting it installed into the municipal buildings here. They see you're moving in the right direction, so that gives you a little more breathing room. But April first is when they wanna see something happening. But we'll be working on the rest of it and finessing an ordinance, a future ordinance.
Is there a grant out there, anything that helps take for this?
Uh, actually, any grant that would have to do with water, rural water or water systems that's out there, such as the one I was mentioning, which we should ask them guys because they actually would've known all about it. There should be money out there for COVID for you guys, every town got something. Like I said, Edge Lee got, they said they got forty something thousand, forty-four thousand or whatever, there's something out there, and that is for infrastructure. I think it's for sanitary wastewater and drinking water, mostly potable drinking water is what we like to see that going for us.
Is that the one we just got, the AR?
AR, A or?
We got that too.
ARPA, ARPA whatever it was?
Yeah, we got that one. We got forty thousand, but we were buying new water meters.
Oh, well, that's part of it. So, yeah, and that's all right, like I said, the biggest expense of this is you probably bought here, you need one for this building and then figure out what's in that other one. And that one, being it's all that was rented, I'd maybe try and split costs. And then we need to start kicking around the idea of how is it, are you gonna put it directly on the businesses? To pay for their own unit and have it installed, or does the city wanna step in? Now, smaller town, less money, not a lot to throw around. That's, that's between you guys and the peeps. So, and that's gonna be the hard part. When it comes to money, it always gets hard.
Anything else, guys? Come on, now it's your turn.
Nothing for me.
If you get a chance, Bill and I talked, you know, we got some water main valves that don't shut off. And being CDVG, I had a call from Blanche Schumacher, there's CDVG, which is Community Development Block Grant Money Available. And Bill and I talked that maybe we should get a count of how many main valves we have that aren't functioning. I don't think there's too many, but if we could get grant money or CDVG money, we should probably try to get D walls lined up so that in the spring, we could hopefully replace them. And if border states is coming in to do spot patching, they could patch in the spots we tear up.
And so you always wanna make sure you fix your substructure before your streets? Because there's nothing like having a brand new street of asphalt and having a tear hole in it.
Overpass that.
I think we're pretty lucky on the streets that were paved, it's just like there's one down by the Lutheran church that won't turn.
There's one down here by Randy Miller's, I know that doesn't work.
I'll just get a call on there.
Spring comes around, you know, I know there's a couple here on Main, but can't really do a whole lot about that until they decide to repaint that.
That one by my house, that red one that the tasty freeze lady owned.
Oh, that's a curb stop.
Oh, that's curb stop.
Yeah, we were, we were talking more the main. Well, I'll talk to Blanche, you know, be with her shock, see what happens.
Yeah, just let us know, I guess. Bill, you got anything else?
Um, we got them meters in. They've been installed already, but it's pretty much what they're gonna be. They're still digital ones, but they're a readout.
Okay.
And that's what, kind of Nathan and I were talking, he's experienced a lot with these. He said, these are a better meter.
I had, well, I would say superintendent, I had a lot of good luck with them and then with the napkins in general, I mean, there's a lot of good meters out there, you know, there's eye tools and whatnot, but what was really nice about this one and integrated into the system is it did cost about, I wanna say twenty-five hundred for the software update, but the handheld that I had still worked and then my radio reads. I just had to drive by, once it was entered into the system properly, I think you had to put a Z or something after the actual serial number when you entered into the into the software there, and then you just drag it on the handheld, or you're getting something different, aren't you? You're getting actually able to put on your belt buckle and, uh, cadillacs or something, correct?
Right.
But phenomenal, those things are great, it'll cut down, especially in the wintertime when there's a lot of snow and cold and whatever. Once you get all them installed, you'll have this whole town rent in an hour, you know, I mean, they're, they work so well. We don't have twenty of them. We don't have twenty of them. I would've went for the other brands, but hey.
And these do have a place to hook up an antenna if we need to.
Yet there's a lot of ten or something, I suppose it could destroy our pole.
Just an antenna kind of hooked up.
If we need to get it up higher in the building room. Okay, and that was one bad thing with the others that they were, well, both Ferguson and then the other competitors, I think we was PSG and whatnot, and they were pushing, I mean, they pushed the meter and say, hey, it looks a lot like that, but you had to install a transmitter on each one, so then now you're still gonna hang something in the rafters and then run a cord down to the unit and everything, so it's not all self-contained. That was one major benefit of that one, everything is right there.
And I talked to the lady that, from Ferguson, that's soulless these that, in the basement of the church or the bank there, we got them three meters in the hole. She said that this shouldn't interfere with each readings.
Okay.
And with that, probably got a few meters, but I was at the water expo in Fargo, this last Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. Took some classes there, that's where I learned a lot about this backflow stuff. There's some other lead stuff that we have to do too, as far as lead lines. Not actually lead lines, but it could be just a fitting in the line, they would consider it a lead line.
Until it's all removed, even if it's been partially replaced, it's considered a lead line. If the curb stop itself is lead or partial lead, you know, old school brass, still considered lead line. If there's a lead line going from main to the curb stop, but it's copper or poly after, still considered entirely a lead line. That's new one, they just pushed through a month ago and then they sent, there was a lot of excited people in that room.
How do you bring that out? You just never dig them up?
Well, there is three samples in town that I have to take as far as lead samples that I have to do every year. So it's just gonna be them three, but, and it could be just as far as a gate or a little ball valve inside the house right before the meter, you know, it could be just that. So.
Okay.
I think that's about it. You're not gonna tell them how much you enjoyed that expo and how much you was well worth it and?
Not really, it was a good time. No, it was good, it was fun.
Sounds like it cost us money, you're not going back to that. Thank you so much for playing stupid for my life.
Freaking air out, it is tired.
All right, anything else, Bill? Thanks for doing that, thanks for going and getting us up to speed. All right, anything else for Bill, you guys? Or Nathan, I guess? Now we move to the auditor.
Um, you'll notice in your packet I gave you, one is for the bond. You guys told me to send the money in and pay for, to pay anything extra for it. We got a little hiccup in that, we just can't send them money. They recommend we keep enough on hand to pay one year's payment in case something must've happened. Once we get up higher in money, then we would send future money in.
But they're gonna redo the bond and everything.
But they have to redo the bond and everything, and you'll see here on that bond paper, when they do that stuff, those fees, I don't know if that's every time or not, it's like four hundred and ninety dollars. But he said, once we, once we start getting up higher in money, like two hundred thousand, then he says then we can call in and have them redo the bond and redo everything and do it that way, but right now, the expense to do it is low, you know, we should keep one whole thing on hand so we don't have to borrow money in case we don't have it. So far, um, that second sheet you got there, you'll see where it says the thirteen thousand, that was the money the city did borrow to the tax assessment because we got the money from them earlier in the year and we had interest due. Well, we had to pay that interest due and yet we haven't given any of our residents' money to pay in. So the city borrowed this account money of thirteen, well, fourteen thousand dollars, so you'll see the first thing I did was reimburse the city this fourteen thousand dollars when we collected our tax assessment money.
Okay.
All right, I do know as of now, you'll, you'll see, all right, in the month of December for the street replacement project, people paid in, there was twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and sixty-eight sent in. Here in January, there's another thirty-three thousand, five hundred and eighty-eight sent in. So, we did receive the check for the twenty-six thousand, but this thirty-three will get this month. And those just keep going into that account. Okay, and it'll even show you on the, the bills where I, I hope I made it self-explanatory when we get to those bills. It'll show we took in twenty-six thousand dollars, I mean, uh, I don't know, let me get that page, I can't get me the right figure here. It'll show you that we deposited thirty-five thousand dollars from Logan County, but twenty-six of that went for the street assessment, had to go in the street assessment account. So I turned around and wrote a check from the city and gave it to the, our city gaffle street assessment account, account. That's why you see that large check written out for shared funds?
Yep.
Okay. And then you'll see on the top there that we took in, the city took in that fourteen thousand, that's the money that the street assessment paid us back. And I think that was, that unless, this is something I'm gonna give to you and they all can look at it, I don't know if it's anything we have, we need to do or should do or always email to me. Boy, I don't know, yeah, I do.
While he's looking at it, Bill, is the garbage truck running? Everything's, you got that rental back and then the new part in, right?
And this, I don't, I've never had to do.
That wasn't terrible, it was a lot better than what we thought we were looking at it on.
That's something that we have to do, I suppose?
Obviously, it must be somewhat common if they have a rental or like a. Anything else for the auditor, guys?
Nope.
Or from, or?
Oh, other than our city elections are coming up, so we're starting to work on that. I mean, they're a while off, but if you start doing it now, everything comes, different things you have to do, publish in a paper, do all that. And I do believe Larry's up. Jeff's up. We have to redo for the mayor because you stepped in. And I don't know if Lauren's going, I don't know. So only three new councilmen and you'll have to, are you gonna go, we have to see if you're re-upping for mayor?
Let's wipe the slate clean and start over.
Bob, yeah.
What's that?
You guys, three more years.
I wonder if I move out of town?
Two more years, yeah.
Time to rezone. Just one little line straight over here. All right, if that will move on. All right, anything for Taylor, you got anything for water sewer policing?
Not when they're sitting here, I don't. That's probably why they can't. Just come on and watch it on YouTube.
Jeff High's not here. Larry, you got anything?
No.
Lauren?
Okay. What happened, uh, the fire district wanted to pay their assessment in full, but I noticed we were missing one parcel number. I had no clue why they wouldn't have got it. When I checked at the courthouse, here the city got it. As we dug through the register of deeds trying to figure out why the city got it, we realized in two thousand thirteen, when we built the fire hall, we didn't own, starting from the north side, there's lot, lot twelve, eleven, and ten. The fire district bought the west seventy feet of lot ten and eleven. We didn't realize that the fire district doesn't own the west seventy feet of lot twelve.
Who owns that?
The city did. And that's why they got the special assessment. When I was at the courthouse, then they kinda recommended that we probably do a quick claim deed and get that west seventy feet of lot twelve over to the fire district. It wouldn't be.
That's the library and nice upstairs, I don't know. It's city property.
Well, what they said would be in. Probably wouldn't be a big issue other than if we ever got into a lawsuit, it opens the door because now you've got, you know, if they went after the fire district and their attorney finds out the city's involved on that property, now they can grab from two entities. The other thing is if there's damage to the building, they said, well, being we both got the same insurance carrier, maybe it wouldn't be so much of an issue, but it could be an issue if we don't have that building, being the building is owned by the district, the property is owned by somebody else. I went to Isaac, he drew up the quick claim deed. But what we'd need if we're gonna take that seventy feet from lot twelve and convey it over to the district, we'd need a motion to approve that from the council.
Yeah, I don't see a problem with that.
I'm on fire district, so I guess, yeah.
I would move to go ahead with the quick claim. For lot twelve, the seventy feet there.
The west seventy feet of lot twelve.
Okay, I'll second on that?
I'll second it.
All those in favor then?
Aye.
Aye. So at some point, then you, being it's in the minutes now, you and your mother have to go before a notary
Okay.
and sign this. Or a notary signs this, but you guys sign here.
Okay.
And then get it back to me or I'll get it to Ellen and keep them so they can sign it in front of the notary. And then I'll get us to the pool here.
Okay. I'll just take this then?
They have to work with you tomorrow, I'll be in straight here.
Okay, we'll just run up to Glen and then, okay.
And that bill, I'll keep that. The district said they'll pay for this.
Okay.
Or the department bill, just, it cleans up the mess.
Oh, absolutely, I know.
Or the oversight, I should be able to say.
Lauren, you also have something about the Sweeney water tower pressure control?
Yeah, we've been sort of struggling, you know, when the tower failed back five years ago, whatever it was. And then we put those VFDs down there and we put a transducer down there right, it's a couple feet ahead of the pump. It's a couple of feet ahead of the pump. And we've been having issues. And I think one of the reasons that issue shows up, it's so hard to get an adjustment, a decent setting because we've got all these users in between the pump and the tower. And back in the old days, we sensed the pressure right up here and send it down on a telephone line. Being they went fiber, we couldn't do that anymore. So, Bill and I talked about it and I was in Fargo and I had time to kill. So I went to Sweeney's just to get an idea on what it would cost to sense up here, send a wireless signal down there and turn the VFDs on and off. And in an emergency, we could save that program. We could still, if we had to disable the tower, we could turn around and go down there and it would just be the more erratic pressures, but we could still have that program to use as a backup. The quote that Sweeney sent me was ninety-one hundred dollars. Bill talked to Dakota Pump, I think it was. And I don't know, did they get back?
Well, they're gonna send out another quote.
How was that different from what you brought? Couple months ago? Didn't you have a same kind of deal?
That one was like thirty-one thousand.
Yeah, it was, I remember it was pretty high.
And I don't, I don't know with the Sweeney, I don't know what, if it's just, all it does is send a signal, there's nothing else, you know, it doesn't, you know, the one that, the quote that I had was, this, they showed what the tower level was. It showed, you know, how much, how much water you're pumping. It showed how long your pumps are running, you know, it showed all that sort of stuff and, you know, and it sent, if you'd send a signal or a text to my phone if something pump isn't running, you know, then it would catch it right away, you know, the next one.
It's basically, I think, the same thing.
That one does the same thing.
And if you want, wanna see the system, Streeter, that's exactly what they got, there's a picture in the wellhouse, or not at the wellhouse, at the tower building. It shows the water level on the tower. And then if you go out to the, the wellhead, that's where the receivers are, the radio. The only downfall, he did warn, you're going cellular, so there's gonna be a monthly fee. And he thought it was about fifty bucks a month to send that signal through the cloud.
I talked to the Dakota Pump Control at that expo and they're gonna send out us another quote with a different company. He said it should be about half the price of what they gave us the last time. So. And that, that's the same, probably same, pretty much setup, you know, we'll send out a signal to your phone or send a word to your phone or power level or anything like that to.
Well, that's the core reason to go at nine thousand.
And what I thought, and I, I guess I'll just say it. Well, they had one thing to it. If we're doing, trying to apply for CDVG money, that's why I wanted this quote. Or, or from Dakota, either one.
Right.
But so we, if we go before that board, so we've got numbers to present to. We can't just do a grant with, or an application with no idea what the hell we're looking for.
I would maybe even add to that with, with, it's gonna be talking about with communications and everything. You can have an antenna put up, you can say you're gonna be running on cell or whatever. You can have that. But an antenna and whatever, whatever's needed, put up there, then it can read, it should be able to read everything in town. So all you should have to do is he could look at, up anything on his phone, if there's any red flags, you're notified right away. Or if you want to see what was going on in different areas, you could pick up any meter you wanted.
Didn't you, we talked about that, I thought there was a lot of issues with that or something you said. That was last meeting or two meetings ago?
Yeah.
What Karen say about that? Cause we had, maybe it's just too expensive or something.
It was, it's still a spending.
Is that what it was? I know there was an issue, we'd have talked about that.
Exactly, if you guys need it and you're putting that in, you already bought the meters, that, that, there should be a grant through the, either a grant forgiveness through USDA or CDVG or State Water Commission. There's always money there, you just gotta get in there and start working, you know, there's always money, grant money, money there. USDA was contracting, they're the hardest ones to get it out of because you gotta jump through so many hoops, but a lot of that's loan forgiveness to or match or complete grant. So, I, I didn't even jump in there.
No.
And CDVG must have got quite an allotment or self-sent.
They did, they did.
She's really urging the applications.
And they did, they both got a lot of money. USDA has money, everybody has money right now and they're just waiting, they're just waiting for people to start filling out the paperwork, going through the process, showing their face, saying the neighborhood town over, 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 over again, and then make a stick. And they'll look at you.
Are these grants where we have to match it?
They're all different.
Where it's all free money, because we did the one that we had to match.
Percentage match, you have a full hundred percent, you had, I, it's, I don't know, I'm not a grant writer, I just know the money.
See, because if we have two hundred and forty, right now, we're just playing with twenty-oh. But we need two hundred and forty in this town. And the last one was, we would have had to put out ninety thousand and they would have put out a hundred and something.
Yeah, so that was, that would, that would have been a pretty good one, that was about sixty percent grant then.
Yeah, but you have to have ninety thousand pay.
I understand that, but they're not just gonna, you're gonna have to, if you wanna update and upgrade, you're gonna have to spend some money. You, you have to spend money to make money or save money, you have to. And to keep from falling behind. Uh, to get to full a hundred percent, it would be nice, great, awesome, ninety percent awesome, it's just, the grant has to be available and fall under the criteria that you need, which is why it's, usually you have your engineers that try to stay on top of that for you. They see what you have going on, what your wants are, what your requirements would be to get into all these, and they, they should be getting in there, I don't know what they charge, but, and keeping their eye on all the stuff that's going on, because that's their job, that's, that's why you hire them, you know? Not so much just to push projects, but to help. That's another thing, just like you said too. I've been to a lot of towns where all of a sudden the engineers come in and they just push a project and they push a project or there's more money coming in and pushing another project. I can get an eighty percent grant, I can get a sixty percent grant. Awesome. But in a million dollar water tower or one point two, you still gotta come up with a lot of money. And then when you put that into specials, the people already have enough specials and they can't afford it. Or a majority of people that live there are on fixed income, you know, they, they, they can't afford nothing like that. So yes, you're absolutely right when it comes to that, you have to know what you can afford. Uh, median household income, the less people make, the lower that number, the higher your percentage grant would be, or loan forgiveness. But that's something I would definitely be leaving out the engineers above, because that's why you guys hired them, you know?
Well, if you guys want, I'll contact Blanche and I'll try to get the paperwork with the CDVG and, you know, we can still turn it, to give you the example, when we built the fire hall, we got a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in grant money. But there were so many hoops to jump to. I went to interstate engineering. The projected cost of that building was four hundred and sixty, I think. We had a hundred and fifty thousand. But then when we decided to go on our own, we had basically the same design, nothing was different. And the finished building was two hundred and twenty-one thousand. So we turned back the hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant.
You didn't have the engineering fees in there.
That and all the other, you know, the soil testing and, and you know what happened, you remember that?
Lauren? Cover it up, cover it up. Roll it over.
Outstanding, I'm gonna watch it.
So that'd be seven hundred thousand dollars if you built it tomorrow.
So anyway, I mean, we're not bound, I guess is what I'm basically saying. We can do an application, see what the hell rules out.
Let's do it. Move forward on that, let us know. Okay. All right, let's see. Old business, uh, city taxes, with that.
I get ready to send them in just for this year until we, if it was time to figure out if we're gonna pay it off.
Okay, got the snow all done. Open pathways, the water meter, the breathe. Did we send out letters or something?
No, we decided to put these, first twenty we get to our worst ones.
Oh, I got you, okay.
And that way we don't fight with it, we just drive past the house and we click it.
Okay, new business, we talked about backflow prevention. Uh, Napoleon Garbage Truck Rental. Uh, I don't know if you've talked to Todd Moes, anybody? He called me one day and they have no idea what they want. What to charge us, they sent, you guys went and got the truck, is that right?
I went down Thursday morning and got the truck.
Okay, and then you did the route, dumped it in Jamestown and returned it, is that right? And he just, and he wants to work with us. And he said if he's got trouble in the future, you know, we'd like to have us return, I mean, but I just thought I'd come to you guys and see what you thought, we gotta give him something, I believe. I don't wanna burn that bridge, so.
Right. I don't either.
But I have no idea what it costs to rent the truck and then the miles that we put on all the way to Jamestown from Napoleon, so.
I just, whatever you get a loaded mile, that's what you, that's what you pay, if you're doing a freight.
He, he kinda gave me a number and I thought it was way too low, so.
What'd he tell you?
Two fifty.
Dollars? Yeah, I would give him three times that.
That's what I'm thinking, like, if you figure that's eighty miles to Jamestown back, that's a hundred and sixty.
Typically what you charge per mile, so four dollar fuel at a loaded mile. Five hundred bucks. That's more than reasonable for a state of emergency, basically.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So I send that check to?
So we'll make a motion to?
I'll make a motion to give Napoleon five hundred dollars for the use of the garbage truck.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thanks guys.
So that goes to?
City of Napoleon.
Just the city of Napoleon?
Yeah.
And I'll save the memo, just write garbage truck rental.
Okay. Got a few permits here to approve. One is for the Texas Hold'em Tournament, which I can't get a date locked down, by the way. It's like the worst time of year. One of the dates was for the next permit, which is the archery raffle, the raffles, we changed that. And then, uh, so we need Texas Hold'em up here for the country club, the archery raffle. And then also the country club raffle for, sorry, not the side-by-side, but whatever we wanna call it, we'll just call it number three nine seven, because that's what the permit number is. If you guys wanna approve those, or if you have a problem with any of them.
Move the permits, a move to approve the permits.
Lauren, second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Do you guys need a permit for the fundraiser for March? For the fire?
Oh, shoot, yeah, we better.
Okay, which other one?
We're having a St. Patty's date, party again at the bar.
Okay.
And there's some raffling involved.
Okay, so, motion to approve for that, for the fire department raffle? Or for St. I don't know, whatever you wanna call it, I guess. Uh, second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, Sweeney went over that. Lauren, you're looking at that. Extra payments for bond company, we went over that.
Yeah, I did. I don't know if I told you, Sherry, I did talk to, um, engineers and I agree, maybe we should just wait till even the following spring because we don't know how many delinquents comes.
Right.
And I just had a call today from one of the large tract landowners. He's gonna let someone go back, I think. I was supposed to meet with him and I thought I'd get back sooner today and I didn't make it. So I'm gonna try to get together with him tomorrow.
Now, when they're, do we get charged that four hundred and ninety every time they send us a bill? Do you see that bill on there?
I did and I didn't, I saw it, but I didn't ask, I forgot about it.
I would assume they would, because they are the ones that have to write up the bill, collect the, I don't collect money, so.
I would have guessed, because they're gonna, I think they're the ones that certify to the county in whatever it is, October, no, it's not October, but July, August, whenever they certify to the county.
Yeah.
And then, why we got you here, like I said, last meeting, we had talked about. And I don't know if it's still a thing, it's not an issue, but we just wanna make sure that you guys aren't approached or we get approached and not know the answers to this. We've just never had it where a deputy didn't live in town since like we can remember.
Yeah.
But it's not necessarily in the order, you know, it's not, nothing was signed as far as we knew, as far as a contract or anything.
Yeah, I know when I started here, I talked to Richie about it when he was mayor and he said, you know, just so you're within a close proximity of town, decent response time if you got a call. Obviously within the school district kind of thing, so.
Right.
Just so we're, you know, our services are over here and not over Napoleon. You know, or somewhere else.
And see, that's what we were asked about, being, you know, we're paying a little extra for that. We just didn't want there to be an issue with any of the patrons that say, well, we're paying for this, you know, why aren't we having someone in town here, but.
Right. And, and right now Kyle is in, he's in the apartments and,
Yeah.
But, you know, he's over at school patrol all the days that he's working. Yeah, it's, to me, that's what Richie had said, was it's just so, you know, you're paying for, we're putting the majority of our, um, service over here. You know, as opposed to other places, so this is, you know, other than, if we're sitting in the office, you know, this is where we're at usually.
Right.
So we're in this area.
Yeah, I know, we just wanted to get it lit before we, and maybe that's something, we can sign a new contract if you do end up moving out of town somewhere. And well, that way we have it in writing and everyone's clear.
Took me a while, so he might be sitting in the apartment.
Sold your house too fast.
Well, how's it going so far, anyway?
Good, I like it down here.
Good.
It's a good change.
Appreciate you having me.
You did a good job, only had one, citizen complaint so far.
Is that me?
It was you, yeah.
You drive by this police commissioner and you're away. Scanning my driveway, just driving right by my.
Well, Lucy didn't give you the finger.
And this is why he wants to move out of town. Doesn't have to drive.
Why, than driving by that asshole.
No, yeah, we'll just address it if it comes up, you know, other than that, we just wanted you guys to be aware of what we were talking about and stuff.
Okay.
All right. Anything else, guys? Both the bills, approve them, they look good this month, so. I think we should have an issue. Oh, the water bills look good, correct?
Yeah. All the ones last month got cleared up. Nobody likes to come to the council and see you guys, I don't want it.
Guys.
It might be because they're talking about some arguments.
I don't know, you work with it, I leave it up to you guys and nobody wants to see them.
Okay. Uh, any questions on bills for January, guys? I guess I didn't see any, we went over the few that, yeah. If not, take a motion to approve them.
Move to approve the bills.
Taylor, second? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Uh, Monday, March seventh, at seven PM, does that work for everyone?
Yep.
I believe so.
Okay, yeah. Uh, motion to adjourn.
So.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Who was the second?
Aye.
Uh, eight oh five. And my pen went out, these things are such shit. Make a motion to get some good pens or.
Well, you guys, I found bags and bags.
I keep saying I'm gonna bring some, I never do something.
I found bags and bags of them in this drawer. And as you can see, they're the City of Gaffel pens, but here, the bank cages.